All right, welcome everyone. It is 6:01 and I'm calling the Anacortes City Council meeting of June 1st, 2022 to order. At this time, I'm going to, I'd like to amend the agenda to add an item 1A in executive session to consider a potential real estate transaction for RCW42.030.1101. City Council will now convene electronically in an executive session for RCW4230.1101 for approximately 15 minutes to discuss a potential real estate transaction. Following the executive session of the regular meeting, we'll convene. No action will be taken during the executive session of the session. The city council may choose to amend the agenda and take action on the real estate transaction in the regular session after it reconvenes. So if you will now disconnect and go to our executive session, go to meeting, and I'll see you in a moment. Coming back into regular session, we have an executive session, no action was taken. And at this time, I will be looking for, um, someone to amend the agenda.
Mayor Gere, should we call the roll real quick?
Yeah, that would work too, wouldn't it? Okay, so Marcia, will you take the roll, please?
Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking for to add to the agenda item 1B. And I need a motion from a council member to do that.
Mayor Gere?
Ms. Moulton?
I move that we add item 1B to the agenda to discuss property acquisition of the property adjacent to the water treatment plant.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. McDougal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, so at this time, I'm going to call for a both, a voice vote on a motion. Okay, we've done that. So now we move to discussion of possible, um, uh, motion on, on, on the estate of Gerald Thomas Coppel property, parcel number P340313-0-063-006, and property P21746.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters?
Would you like to summarize what this transaction is about for the benefit of the public prior to us getting into it?
Yeah, well this, um, maybe I have Mr. Buckamire, um, explain that, Mr. Buckamire there, and then, then I'll qualify what the motion would look like, Mr. Buckamire.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. This item is for the acquisition of property immediately adjacent and north of our water treatment plant. Um, council did authorize in May of 2019 that the pass an ordinance allowed us to proceed with the condemnation of this property. Uh, that action has finalized just late last week and we have, uh, our council, Foster Garvey, has, um, recommended that we auth, that we execute the real estate purchase and sale agreement that you have before you.
And this property could be used for future expansion of water treatment land that's adjacent to it, so whatever our, our needs might be.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. We, we don't have a definite plan at this point, other than that it would be used for expansion of the water treatment.
And this property is zoned agricultural natural resource land under Skagit County zoning. It's outside the city limits of the city of Mount Vernon. Um, I'd be very supportive of assuming we are successful in acquiring it, leasing it to agricultural operators for continued agricultural production until such time that, you know, we have to have it to operate a regional water system.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I'll be looking for the, um, a discussion on this item or a possible motion. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Mayor Gere, if Mr. Buckamire could talk about the funding, the dollar amount, and the size of the parcel for the folks that might be tuning in and not familiar with this parcel.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah. It's approximately nine and a half acres, slightly more than that. Um, again, it lies immediately adjacent to and north of our water treatment plant. Um, the, our final settlement negotiated is $490,000. That is funded by our regional, um, water system, because it's for the benefit of the regional water system.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters?
And that's fairly close to the appraised value of the property.
Correct.
That's true, yeah.
And, uh, I don't have anything in front of us related to this transaction. No documents, no cover sheet, anybody else have that? No. Uh, what motion would you like us to make? So the-
Um, Mayor Gere?
Ms. Swednum?
Sorry, Fred, since it's Mr. Buckamire not to interrupt, um, I think at this point, we're asking council to make a motion authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of the property.
For the estate of the Gerald Thomas Coppel property.
In the amount of $490,000.
Okay, while that's fresh in our minds, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement in the amount of $490,000 for the property that Mr. Buckamire described. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Miller, to authorize the approval for my, for the mayor to sign the real estate purchase and sale agreement, um, for the purchase by support in price of $490,000 plus closing to the estate of Gerald Thomas Coppel, parcel number P340313-0-063-0006, parcel number 21746. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mayor Gere, hold up just a second. Uh, since again, we haven't seen this contract, do I assume correctly that it's on Northwest MLS real estate forms, no other weird provisos, that kind of stuff?
That's correct.
Okay, and are we taking this property unencumbered by easements and other claims?
That's correct, yeah.
And have we done a Phase 1 environmental site assessment on the property?
We have not.
Okay, um, what is the length of time of the real estate purchase and sale agreement? What's the diligence period? Usability?
Uh, that's one- Yeah, hold on a second.
I guess mainly I'm looking for assurance that we're going to perform the Phase 1 ESA title report, title insurance, all those things before purchase?
Correct, and so we have a estimated-
Ms. Swednum?
Go ahead.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt there. We, we actually are working with, um, with a title company right now to complete all those items.
Estimated closing is July 17th. If it, for what it, for what it's worth, and it might be worth a lot, um, Steve DiGiulio from Foster Garvey is handling this one, um, uh, literally personally, but handling it himself.
Um, so based on the information you've just received, and we have a motion and a second, are you ready for me to pass for the vote? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yeah.
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Yeah.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, uh, we'll move on to item 2 on the agenda under announcements and committee reports. First of all, I have a COVID-19 update. I will, um, as usual, be giving my community briefing at 4:00 PM on Wednesday. Today at 4:00 PM, the Skagit County Board of Health sent for the second time a full application to the Washington State Department of Health, um, for application for us to move into Phase 2. We believe we're now in total compliance with the latest, governor's latest rules and guidelines to get into Phase 2 under his reopening counting, by counting of the June 1st date. So we believe we'll hear by Tuesday or Wednesday this week for approval to move to Phase 2, which means our community, I know they're busy, all the salons and restaurants and retail shops are more than ready to go, so we're very hopeful on that. And that's really all I'm going to say about COVID at this time. I do want to address one other thing, and then is Chief Small with us, Marcia?
Yes, he's here.
Did he join us tonight? Well, anyway, first of all, um, I want to address the protests that happened this weekend, and not just in Anacortes, but across our nation. Um, I want to address the sadness and the anger that many are feeling over Mr. Floyd's death. A black person's life was lost in another senseless act of violence. Systemic racism seems to be, is alive and well in our society, and we all need to do something to address this. As a white person in this country, I cannot fully understand racism. I have not lived in it, but I do, but I have tried my best, to my best ability, to learn about systemic racism and white privilege, and how our society is impacted by this. I believe that one of the things we can do to address racism is to better understand what it is and how pervasive it, it is in our society. In coming days and weeks, I'll be working with city staff and council to identify training and to, to increase our, our awareness and our understanding of racism in our, in our community. Um, and I also want to say, and I encourage all of you to expand your knowledge of systemic racism, white privilege, and concepts of social justice. We have an amazing community of caring compassionate individuals, and my wish is that this community, that we will continue to find ways to build an understanding, to address inequities, and provide help. Thank you very much. Are there any, Ms. Chief Small, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, and Chief wanted to talk a little tonight to us on this also. Yes, we can hear you, Chief, go ahead.
Okay, thank, thank you, everyone. Um, I just wanted to say something tonight that-
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sure, move closer to the microphone here, is that better?
Perfect.
I'll try to shout, shout a little bit here. Um, I echo Mayor Gere's words, very, very wise. I also want to say that we support everyone's right as a police department to peacefully gather and protest. The protesters have a very valid message. As a community, we will not tolerate racism or police brutality, period, folks. I can only speak for the Anacortes Police Department, but we also will not tolerate racism or police brutality. Now, we are mandated to train on these things every year. It's a 24-hour mandate for this year too, for all of our officers in terms of patrol tactics, communication, and de-escalation of situations. We get city training every year for diversity and harassment training. We take those things seriously. As a department, we investigate each and every complaint we receive regarding racial profiling or bias by our officers. And quite simply, folks, those things don't really happen in our city. I went back five years for statistics for our department. We had zero complaints of racial profiling or, or bias-based policing in 2015, 2016, or 2017. We had one in 2018 by a young woman who got a speeding ticket, and she was a white gal, who was complaining that we stopped her only because she was young and driving a sports car. So I don't really qualify that as a racial profiling at all, though. Um, we had two in 2019, both fully investigative, both founded, being founded. I have more details on those if you, before I can talk about that a little bit if you want to, though. We had zero so far this year in 2020. Um, what we see more in our department is, you know, racism exists in Anacortes, no doubt about that at all. It's not coming from our officers towards the public, though. But we do see it from the public towards each other, and the public towards my African-American officers. Talk to them, they have stor, I've seen those, people being called, use the N-word. And it's ugly, and it's not acceptable in our city, period, again. Um, I get embarrassed for our community too, and people call in, there's a black person walking in my neighborhood, what's he doing, anything criminal? Well, just, he's walking here. And we have to respond to those complaints. That's, that's, you know, that's embarrassing for our community, folks. Um, we need to be smarter than that, and more tolerable than that. Um, again, I just want to say, as your police chief, we do our best every day to deal with all races of people. We are respectful of the public, we appreciate people in this community, we are not abusive, we are not racist by any means, though, and we won't tolerate those people who are in our profession, period. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions too, if anybody has any for me.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Walters?
I certainly appreciate you addressing this and also Chief Small's words tonight. Uh, we did receive one email at least from a constituent wondering, you know, what is the situation in our town? Because I think when we see all this, we think, you know, at the very least, what we need to make sure is that we're not part of the problem. Um, I haven't seen any reply from that, and I think council members are fairly ill-equipped to reply to those types of questions, because we're not in charge of the administration. So will you be CCing us on your reply?
Absolutely, I will. I spent the day gathering my thoughts before I, I wanted to respond to all of you, and I will respond and CC you tomorrow on that letter.
All right, excellent, thank you. I think it's very encouraging to hear Chief Small's words tonight.
Thank you.
And just finally from me too, that we do track complaints about our officers. It's an accreditation requirement, it's something we take very important. Um, and again, we don't get many of those folks, especially from a racial aspect by any means, though. So, um, every complaint we get is investigated, and we track those, and we'll be logged those, because we have to, and we want to.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Young?
Fine, this has been a difficult challenge, I think, for all of us as humans, recognizing that, uh, what we have all bear witness to was, you know, a senseless murder in many ways before our eyes. I think that the challenge that we face as a society and the angst and the phone calls that we're all seeing is really all about how do we move forward? How do we get beyond this and recognize one another as human and realize that the common thread that we all have- thread that we all have is that our love of our town, but love of our society, and that equal opportunity for all is built into our system. In this case, we had a wonderful march, a wonderful group of people down on the corner. I mean, it was really delightful how our town rallied, and the horns were blowing all in support. It really showed the beauty of our town, and it was encouraging. I happened to go down myself, because I heard about it, and I ran into several other elected officials there that were there, including our Senator Liz Lovely. But the point that I wanted to make about it was that, you know, even though that in the end, it was an issue that came up, people were there because of love and what took place. How do we get to where we need to be? Even the best police forces in the best cities still need to arm themselves with the tools they need to be ambassadors for our city. Where our city puts its budget is where our city speaks. So in this case, we have a teaching opportunity, not only for our police force, which I thought handled it very well, but it's also an opportunity to make sure that we further expand their knowledge and their tool base to be able to deal with different people of diverse thoughts, ideas, genders, everything about it. So that's something that I do hope we work even more so on, but clearly, our town is doing a great job. But I do think that there's work to do, no different than Mayberry and Barney Fives carrying one bullet. So it's no different. So, you know, again, it's been an emotional ride, and it's been hard as a person of color, but what I'm proud of is my town. The majority of the people here in this town have showed their faith, and they have stood, and the fact that they stood out in the rain, carrying signs, it just warmed my heart. So I ask council and you, Mayor, as an administrator, that we continue to invest in the training and the education, and we take it up a notch. Because what this example showed us is how much our community really needs that education and that opportunity to learn from one another. You know, I've talked with other council members, so I'm sure some of the others may have something they want to add.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Does anyone else have any comments?
Mayor Gere?
Ms. Moulton, and then Mr. McDougal.
I was also present at the protest on Saturday afternoon, and it was wonderful to see the solidarity that people expressed on the sidewalks with their signs, also drivers going by, lots of thumbs up, lots of honking, and I just, it just helps to feel that people are standing together against this systemic injustice that's troubled our society for so long, and so tragically. So I was, I was very glad to see that and be a part of that. Also, Chief Small, I greatly appreciate your words as well, and if you would like to share a little bit more about the two reports in 2019, I'd be, I think I and some of our citizens would be interested to hear about those.
Sure. Oops.
Chief, do you want to do that now, or another time?
You tell me. What do you prefer?
What's that?
Said, "You tell me, what do you prefer?"
Well, if you're, if you're prepared, go ahead.
So the two complaints in 2019, the first one was on a traffic stop, where the gentleman, Hispanic gentleman, stopped for multiple equipment violations, cracked windshields, things hanging off his car, things sparking underneath the car. He was stopped on the highway. He had a suspended driver's license. He was taken into custody, released at the scene, treated very, fairly respectfully. He was a convicted felon also, I think, which sometimes they're very skilled about, you know, gosh, these cops are doing things wrong now. But he was treated with respect, got a ticket, and got released, basically, is the bottom line. The second one was two calls involving the same people about a week apart, and the first complaint was two trains, he was camping on private property in the city of Anacortes. We didn't know who they were when we got there. We contacted these folks, asked them to leave without the property owner's request, which they did, you know, no harm, no foul, great, and off they went on their way. And a week later, at 1:30 in the morning, we had another traffic stop for an equipment violation, I think it was a headlight out, probably. Again, dark car, we can't see who's inside the car. Officer stops the vehicle, the driver has a suspended license, a different guy, suspended license again, though, and a warrant for his arrest. He was taken into custody. He was booked and released on the warrant, as we say, issued a traffic ticket for no license, and released. And I think the cool thing about this story, though, too, for APD, is that we gave him a courtesy ride to a hotel and got him in for a room for the night. And that's the service we give our community, you know. We didn't, we weren't derogatory, again. We had no idea who was in the car, and we stopped the car, but they made a complaint that we were profiling Mexican-Americans. And again, we went to a call, somebody complained in the first one, we had no idea who we were in contact. The second one, a dark car with a traffic violation, we didn't know who was inside the car until he walked up on us. So that was also proved to be unfounded. And that was our two for 2019.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. McDougal?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Small, and Mayor, and Mr. Young, and Ms. Moulton, for your statements. I have been pretty affected by this as well, and wanted to actually just read a statement that I, that I wrote out. So, "Our country is going through a time of great pain, as we are simultaneously coping with a human health crisis and an economic crisis, both caused by the pandemic. And if we're being honest with ourselves, the crisis of systemic racial injustice has been with us all along. Our system, as it is currently built, creates and exacerbates inequalities with an ever-widening gap between the privileged and the non-privileged. All races suffer systemic economic inequality, but for minorities, the inequality is worse. All races suffer inequality in key quality of life metrics, like life expectancy or healthcare outcomes when battling COVID-19, but for minorities, the inequality is worse. And the force of our criminal justice system is not applied evenly to the haves and the have-nots across all races, but for minorities, it is painfully worse. These inequalities were not caused by a single individual or group, they are systemic. They are the result of our nation's trajectory through history, and for that reason, we all own the problem. Recognizing that we all own the problem means that we, as individuals, and as a society, can do better. My family and I recognize that we can do better, too. We're working on a plan for how we can help support organizations battling racial injustice. While the problem is very big, and it feels insurmountable, I encourage citizens from across our community to find ways, large or small, in which to do better. We can do better, and really, we must do better. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. McDougal.
Mayor Gere, if I could add just one final thing, and I'll be brief, I promise.
Okay, you promise?
I promise, you know, I always tell by your voice, but here, here's the thing. Quite honestly, all of us want the same things, and the challenge that we're facing is, it's easy for us to look at other societies and think, "It happens over there," and it doesn't happen here in our beloved town. But it does. The good thing is that we have an extraordinary amount of good people here that live here, that just needed to understand what they can do and to see the injustice. So the challenge that we face in going forward is we become the town we want to become, the nation we want to become, is to challenge each of us, particularly those that are not of color, or those that are on the spectrum, to step in and not be silent. That's what we're asking. And then we put our heads together and find a solution that works for all of us, as humans. And I believe that that's the opportunity we have in our nation, but also a great opportunity here in our own beloved town of Anacortes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, any closing? Mr. Miller?
Mayor Gere, I'd just like to say, I appreciate Chief Small weighing in, and I believe in, and I believe in the professionals of our police department when they say they don't tolerate racism or police brutality. And I think it's important that, you know, I trust, I trust our great police department, and I trust those words from our police chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any final comments? All right, then, for no further ado, we'll move on to Item 2B, our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. I think that's you, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met kind of a special meeting on the 27th, Wednesday, and we're going to talk about this more, I think, Item 4A. But just real quick, it was about whether we use some of the lodging tax funds to help, help our restaurants and taverns kind of recover, as we come out of COVID, with the use of parklets. But some of the other things I wanted just to get out there to think about before Mr. Meesmer presents, the, a lot of authority we give our, our, Mr. Meesmer for things like sidewalk use permits, which he's, he's executing, which is a good thing. I think at the time, he said, "For so far, to help out restaurants with more seating." And then there's a lot of support from the restaurants and tavern owners that would like to see us do whatever we can to help them come out of a very, very challenging hole that they're already in. So again, we'll talk about it more in Item 4.
Thank you. Any other additional comments on the Lodging Tax Committee? All right, so we'll go to Item 2C, Public Works Committee.
Mayor Gere?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met just prior to this meeting, Mr. Young, Mr. Walters, and myself, with Mr. Buckenmeyer, Ms. Fox, and Ms. Tesh. And we talked about an option for replacing our aging incinerator at the wastewater treatment plant. It's a hydrothermal processor. Essentially, what it does is it turns waste into biofuel. We talked about this a little bit after our last Public Works meeting, but it takes waste and turns it into natural gas and also biocrude. So it's a renewable, it's a renew, turns it into renewable fuel. So we have an option to, to secure a future, one of these hydrothermal processing sort of adjuncts that we'll add to our plant to replace our incinerator, which since it's been around since 1992, it's having more and more maintenance issues. So it's really getting to be at the end of its useful life. So this is, this looks like a positive replacement for it, and a move into the future. So we learned a lot about that. And we also talked about a press release that came out today. The Association of Washington Cities awarded Anacortes its Municipal Excellence Award for our fiber in our water lines. So that's pretty cool. And Mr. Buckenmeyer will accept the award on, on the city's behalf at an upcoming event in June, an online event, a virtual event. Also, our fiber system will be featured in a couple of magazines, a national magazine and a worldwide magazine. One is going to do a feature on our whole Public Works Department and the innovative things that they've been doing. And then another one is called Broadband Communities. It's at the Worldwide Magazine, and they'll be doing a feature on Anacortes, too, because about 12 years ago, they did a Wish article about, "Wouldn't it be great to put fiber in water lines?" And lo and behold, Anacortes has done it. So it will be featured in that magazine as well. The last thing I have is that there's now a page that can be found on the city's website, under Public Works, the Solid Waste page. I haven't looked at it myself, but it is there. It's all, you can also find it from the Parks Department page, and it's about the A Avenue landfill. And it's a lot of information there that will be helpful for the public to know, about the requirements that the city has met from the Department of Ecology and the Department of Health, and that the reason that the landfill has not been disturbed and has been left capped and not tried to take everything out of there is because it was determined by the Department of Ecology that doing that would make the situation worse by upsetting everything that was there, and that would be more environmentally destructive than just capping it and leaving it at the. So anyway, more information on the page, so I invite people to go check it out. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing none. We'll move to the consent agenda, Item 3A through D.
Mayor Gere?
Ms. Moulton?
I would like to pull Item 3D from the consent agenda, and then it seems like maybe it would be a better idea to talk about it after we talk about 4A to authorize the distribution of the funds in order to purchase those. But other than that, I move to approve the consent agenda, Items 3 through, 3A through 3C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Miller. All in favor, no, was it you? Was it you? No? Was it Mr. Young? Okay, his light went on, yours didn't. Okay. So, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young, to approve the consent agenda, Item 3A, D. All in favor, signature by both, say a "aye." Okay, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So are we in agreement? You can head nod if we can take Item 3D and come back to it. All right, so we'll come back to that in a few moments. We'll move on to other business, under 4A, Resolution 2092, authorizing distribution of tourism promotion funds to the city of Anacortes, PCDED, Department of Purchase of Parklets to expand restaurant seating and to accommodate distancing restrictions outlined in the Governor's Safe Start Ordinance, uh, Safe Start Washington Plan. This is a discussion with possible action. Mr. Meesmer, would you like to talk about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So over the past couple of weeks, the Planning Department has been working with local restaurants and merchants to identify methods to provide additional, additional space for customers. And one of the methods of doing that is, as Mr. Miller mentioned, is sidewalk use process. And right now, I have four applications in, and our hope is, is that we might get a couple of more. I've also talked to the merchants about, once we get into Phase Two, the possibility of being able to put some merchandise on the sidewalk, as long as they can meet their social distancing requirements, and the sanitizing requirements of the goods that they put out. So in talking with the merchants and the restaurants, many of the restaurants said, "You know, hey, we really liked that parklet that was out here a couple of years ago. How about we get some more?" And in talking with our planning committee, we felt that with the one parklet we have, it would be good to have a consistent approach to what the parklets look like. Additionally, the parklet, the Darrel Parklet, is a modular design where, you know, you can easily assemble and disassemble it, move it to a new location, or store it wherever you need to. You can add another section to it. The ones that we're looking at are 17-foot by 8-foot. They come with a railing that would comply with the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Control Board's requirements. So in talking with them, the, the user, the restaurant user, would have to revise their current permit, but they would be able to serve alcohol on them. The parklets would allow two tables on them, and would allow for social distancing. Again, they would all look alike. They'd be placed on the street in a parking stall in front of the restaurants. I've got 11 restaurants that are very excited about getting these in place. In talking with the restaurants and the merchants, everybody felt that this would help bring more people downtown. With the parklets, we'd be looking at some guidelines or policies on how they could be decorated and, or not decorated. Mostly, what we're looking at is plants, having, you know, greenery around the parklet. We will also need to put some wheel stops on each end, and a couple of orange pylons on the ends, so that, you know, people recognize, "Hey, don't be blazing, running into the parklet." So with this, discussions that I've been having with the businesses, one of the other ideas is to close Commercial Avenue down on a Friday and Saturday, and let the businesses just flow out into the street. And so that would include having the restaurants and taverns have their tables out there. It'd have to meet Washington Liquor and Cannabis Control Board requirements. It would also mean allowing the merchants out in the street. And so I don't, I don't think that's going to happen until Phase Three, Phase Four, but I want to work with the Skagit County Health Department to confirm that. And they're very excited about that. They're also, you know, I would have thought that there would be some concerns about losing parking on Commercial, but I really didn't hear very much objection to that at all. The other part of closing the street down would be... The other part of closing the street down would be, and Mr. Walters mentioned this, would be to have parking stalls on the side streets designated as takeout and pickup areas. So you'd have at least a couple of parking stalls for that. And the, the restaurants and the merchants all thought those are all great ideas. So the, the parklets, to get back to that, I looked all over the internet to try to find something similar that would fit our needs. And Darrow is the only one that provides a modular style that could be disassembled and moved to another location quite quickly. And I've also looked at going with some type of site-built wood structure, which are quite a bit more expensive, can't disassemble them very easily, can't move them around very easily. So I hope I've got all that out there for you. We would want to purchase 10 of them. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on May 27th, recommended approval. The total request is for $120,000 and about $4,000 of that would be for the wheel stops and for the orange pylons and potentially for some plants, potters and plants. Well, I, I think that's all I have. If you have some questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter first. Go ahead.
So how are you deciding on who gets to use them? Are they permanently assigned to the restaurants? For how long can they use them for? Is it possibly other retail shops can use them later?
Thank you, that's a great question. So yes, it is possible retails, the merchants could use them later on. What we've done to determine which restaurants would be able to use those are those with the least seating capacity. And if this works out, then we could certainly purchase more. A good example of seating capacity is, well, maybe the A Town. I think they might, with the new COVID requirements, only be able to have about three, maybe four tables inside. This would allow two extra tables for them outside. On the other hand, Island Cafe has a huge amount of sidewalk that they can use as sidewalk use permit. And they're able, they in fact already went in and bought some fencing. They'd be able to get about eight more tables outside and they've got quite a lot of tables inside that they'll be able to use as well. I've been talking with the merchants about how we can use the sidewalk. I would expect that these parklets would go out and stay out all year. They could have some umbrellas on them, which would be similar in kind, but colorful, that would, you know, attract folks downtown. I don't, I don't see us, at least for the first year, moving them around very much. But if this takes off, I certainly could see us getting more parklets.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I, I think that this is a good, an important step that we need to take to get these things ordered and coming. But then we have a lot more work to do. You know, we need to set up policies, we need to figure out who's eligible, what streets, you know, all, figure out all of that detail. But fundamentally, we're going to be, I think, re-envisioning downtown in some pretty substantial ways, or we're not going to have one. And I think downtown is not just part of the economy of Anacortes, it's part of the culture, it's part of the society. It's, it's really important to the character of our town. And, you know, it was pretty good before, but now with this huge hit that everything's taking, we need to do a lot more than we have before. We need to do, we need to be thinking big. And, you know, this, this idea of parklets originated a couple of years ago and we, we tried it by just making available extra seating for whoever on the sidewalk. These would be associated directly with a restaurant and reservable for a restaurant and that is a fundamental change. The details here will matter. The amount of landscaping, the planting, the pots, the colors, all the things that we do to attract people to the downtown, show people that we're open for business, have seating that people feel comfortable in because it is physically distant from seating next door. All of those details will make a big difference. So this ought to be really the beginning of the discussion rather than the end. But we do need to get the order in and get these things coming. Summer doesn't last that long to begin with here, so I would, I would urge us to move quickly.
Thank you. Who else want to come up?
Mayor Gere.
Doug, oh, Mr. Miller and then Mr. McDougall.
So yeah, great comments by Mr. Carter and, and Mr. Walters, all things that we were discussing at, at LTAC. To Mr. Carter's point, you know, kind of the fairness, how do you distribute these? You know, this is, how, how do you get the, those out? And I think Mr. Meesmer answered that to start. Certainly long-term, as what Mr. Walters is talking about, there's definitely some long-term things to look at. Because ultimately, by the way, that's why the LTAC committee, which was a little bit reluctant to, to approve these funds for a couple of reasons that I think most of them been mentioned, parking timeframe, impacted curbside delivery, ADA, liquor and cannabis board wildcard, too much money, considering LTAC is going to be, you know, short probably for the next 12 to 18 months, is not going to see the kind of funds coming in. But to the long-term piece, I think ultimately, the hoteliers, the people who depend on their livelihoods to bring people in town, thought the idea of having this, you know, our wonderful town, you know, sprinkled with the unique parklets, obviously they become unique because they decorate, decorate them and, and attract people to them, i- is something that definitely long-term was, was the selling point. So yeah, all, all great points, but I just wanted to try to get some in, insight into the conversation that we had with many of the businesses that, that are responsible for collecting and, and ultimately recommending distribution of those funds.
Thank you. Ms. McDougall.
Thank you, and thank you for the briefing, Mr. Meesmer. And recognizing, thank you for your comments, Mr. Miller as well, recognizing that this is a, a long, part of a longer-term investment in, in downtown itself. What's the estimated lifespan for the, the parklets themselves if they're deployed year-round, say, versus just during warm weather? Do we have any sense for that, that kind of information?
Uh, that's a, a great question. I really don't have a sense. The, most of it is galvanized steel. The, the actual flooring is of a weatherproof type plywood. So that might need to be replaced at some point down the road. The one we have, we had, we bought that in 2016 and it shows no, no measurable wear at all.
Good deal. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Molton, oh, Ms. Cleveland McGrath, yes.
Um, Mr. Meesmer, do you know when they will get delivered if we order them this next week, what the timeframe is?
Um, if, if I can confirm the order tomorrow, it's likely we'll get them early July.
Thank you. Okay, and I just, I think this is a really good step. While not directly available to our retail merchants, at least for this first phase, it really will help and increase walkability, right? Which we've always wanted to see in our downtown. As all of us know, stuck in our houses, we would probably love to be at least able to wave at some friends or acquaintances as they're eating from a distance. So I think this will be a step in the right direction to also help our retail businesses, you know, encourage this downtown camaraderie that we need right now. So I'm, I'm encouraged by it and I also hope that if it does work, that we can expand it to support our retailers, retailers too. And anyone else who, you know, we need to continue to think outside the box. I think this is a good step in the right direction. So thank you for doing this work and finding something that's relatively affordable compared to the other options.
Ms. Molton, is she have a comment?
Um, yes, thank you. I think this is a great discussion with a lot of excellent points. And I'd like to thank LTAC, the committee for doing good work on this also. And kind of to Ms. Cleveland McGrath's point, I also, I love the idea of it being, of them being specific to restaurants who need the seating the most. I was glad to hear that, that that's the criterion for determining who gets them. And also I do like the idea of, at some point, once we have a more economic recovery happening, that ideally we'll have some that aren't tied to spending money at all. That the idea of a parklet is that it's accessible to all, that you don't, that you come down and, and hopefully you do support your merchants, but, but that it's a place, kind of like that little mini park in between the post office in El Henete or Picket Pocket Park, where it's just a place that you can, that you can rest and hang out. So anyway, I, I love this idea. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer, for your work. And I think it's an exciting opportunity and it'll, it'll be great to bring that added level of vibrancy to downtown.
Okay. I just had one thought I wanted to share. When Jeremy was talking about retail, sometime in my research of our pandemic, I saw pictures from the Spanish flu pandemic and many barbers moved their chairs to the sidewalk and did haircuts outside. So I had this vision of a salon with that, you know, for maybe for the kids, for the quick cut type of thing. So I think we need to be open to all ideas, however, any group can be successful outside. So I don't know, I just had to add that because I have this vision of, maybe right not next to the dining room table, but you know, a block down, we could be doing that. Any other, Mr. Walters?
Uh, so I think that that's an important point and an important image to keep in mind here. And to Ms. Molton's point, you know, the formal name of these things is the Darrow Parklet, that's the product name, but we probably shouldn't call them that when we deploy them around town because they really will not be parklets. They, they, they don't match that concept. What they'll be is extensions of the sidewalk. And there, there really needs to be some kind of permitting function associated with that so that restaurants can claim that portion of the sidewalk. And they're going to be really beneficial, I think, because the sidewalk is too constrained otherwise. Now, the restaurants that have sidewalk use permits now, in some cases, really constrain the width that you have to walk through there. You've got the, the fencing that the restaurant has to have, you've got a fire hydrants and a trash can and a light pole and, I mean, in some cases it gets very constrained. So this will eliminate a lot of those problems. It will fundamentally change the nature of the street. And I think when we start getting these deployed and get the other accoutrements with them, you know, the planters and that kind of thing, we are, we are going to be very impressed with what it starts to look like. And we, I recommend everybody, you know, just Google or, or Bing and, and do an image search for the town of Banff. They are not doing quite this, but they, they do have a very carefully delineated portion of the sidewalk that is set aside for restaurants that are adjacent in the building. And it, it works really well and this is a way to sort of achieve that. So I'm pretty excited I move approval, uh, resolution.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Molton to approve Resolution 2092, authorizing the distribution of tourism promotion funds to the City of Anacortes Community Development Department for the purchase of parklets to be renamed to expand seating to accommodate distancing restrictions as outlined in the Governor's Safe Start Washington Plan. Any other discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take?
I heard the motion was simpler.
Okay. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Molton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Now I'd like to go back to item three D, which is Resolution 2093, waiving the state competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of parklets from Darrow Bike Racks.
And Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
And I know we can have more discussion on this, but I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2093, waiving the state competitive bidding requirements for purchase of parklets on the Darrow Bike Racks.
Okay. Thank you. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Ms. Molton. Is there any more discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, now we're going to move back to other business under four B, ordinance 3071, authorizing maximum authority for affordable housing sales tax credit. This is a discussion with possible action. And Mr. Hoagland, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the, the end of a long process that you may remember started last year. So this, this ordinance authorizes the maximum credit back from the state to the city, the money to be used for affordable housing. So this, this ordinance authorizing this credit, you may remember the legislation that authorized this, it was kind of a, there was a multi-part process to it. But to get the full credit, the maximum credit, there also, for cities, there also needed to be a qualifying local tax in place. And the City of Anacortes has that now with the one-tenth of one percent sales tax that is going to go into effect July 1st. So stretching back again to last year, there was a, a resolution that was authorized indicating intent to collect this. The public vote was held in February, that passed with a 55% approval rating. And now this, this ordinance now will authorize the collection of the, the full amount or the maximum amount of that sales tax credit, which is .0146% that will come back to the city to be used for affordable housing purposes. The other part of this ordinance also establishes a trust fund in the city's accounting system for those monies to flow in and out of. And that'll be both the sales tax credit that we're talking about here, in addition to the one percent affordable housing sales tax revenue that will go into effect July 1st. So those July 1st revenues that will start showing up into the city accounting system in September. And this credit, I believe goes into effect same time in, or maybe it's after, after July. I think July 28th was the deadline to have this, this done and at that time that credit will go into effect. So happy to.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
I have questions about the terminology, trust fund. Is it not sufficient to simply say fund?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a good question and trust fund may not be the right, the right term. It's, it's a fiduciary type of fund. I just wanted to delineate that in the, in the ordinance, that it wouldn't be a typical special revenue fund. There's a number of different funds that are identified in the BAR's manual in this type of, so a trust fund is, is really more accurately like the type of fund that we have for the Fireman's Pension Fund, where that money actually does, does not belong to the, the city. It's, it's, it's actually, you know, part of a retirement system. The city doesn't have access to it for any other, any other reason, other write checks for, for those retired firefighters. But it is a fiduciary type of fund in that it resides in that 600 level in the accounting system. The current expense fund is funds 001, special revenue funds are the 100 level, debt service the 200 level, et cetera. I just wanted to make clear that it was a fiduciary type fund. That money will flow into that fund and out of that fund for the reasons outlined in this ordinance.
So that concerned me though, because I don't know what the implications were of calling it a resolution of trust fund. If we just called it a fund, we are still constrained by the statute as to what we can spend the money on. So why wouldn't we just do that?
Yeah, that's fine. We can, we can make that adjustment.
Is there any benefit to doing something else, to call it a trust? Is there any benefit to doing something else instead of calling it a trust fund? Because I don't know who the, you know, for a trust fund, I don't know who the beneficiary is. There are constraints on how we can spend the money, but that's very common across most of our, our funds.
Yes, so.
You dropped the word trust.
So we, we will, we will set up the fund in accordance with the bars manual published by the State Auditor's Office.
Yeah, the, the recital that says we desire to establish a trust fund could just say, we desire to establish a fund, and then it goes on to say we'd set it up consistent with the bars manual. And then Section Two, after now therefore be it ordained, says we'll establish a trust fund, but we could just say fund, and then you can figure it out consistent with the bars manual, and we won't be locked into something else.
Sure, that's fine.
Mayor Gere.
I'm Mr. Miller.
So, Mr. Hoagland, I, I mean, it's just, you're, it'll, you're creating a, a separate and unique new bars number, correct, for this fund?
Yeah, that, that's correct. And I guess, and that was what I, I wanted to make clear, that we, you know, I know council is familiar with the concept of fund accounting that we, that we use, and the term trust fund, I think, is, is kind of familiar to, to a lot of people. But it, it would technically be a trust fund, it might be an agency fund, but it's in that fiduciary set. But, yeah, we'll set that, we'll set that fund up with its own unique set of bars numbers according to the bars manual.
Because, because for me, that, I mean, that's enough to make sure it's in a, in a, in a, a fund that's complying with the RCW rather than the word trust. So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with removing, basically, I think there's three, three words of trust in the ordinance, and, and then I'd be good with it.
Okay. More comments?
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton and Mr. Miller, Mr. Walters.
Thanks. Mr. Hoagland, I know there's a Washington State Housing Trust Fund, so did, just out of curiosity, did the language come out of, come from there originally?
No, this is, this is language that I put into the, into the ordinance. So it was just, yeah, it, it's, just that term trust fund is, it's, it's used in a number of places where it may not typically, you know, be legally correct, you know, by the definition of the bars manual. But I think people generally understand that trust funds are monies that are going someplace else rather than to the, the city coffers.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, we did have some discussion about this at the Finance Committee level quite some time ago, and there is the possibility that we will collect more revenue under the sales tax than are needed for the projects that we talked about. There's also the possibility we will collect less. But in the event that we collect more, we still are required to spend it on the purposes outlined in the statute. But those purposes could include funding a social services person related to housing, those kinds of things. They're, they're not necessarily, there's no, there's no requirement for us to spend that money on the Family Center or the Housing Authority after we fulfill our other obligations to them. So I, I don't, I don't think it's necessary at this point to describe what type of fund it is. We'll just set it up in a fund. If we want to, we could come back and create a plan for the possibility that we end up with excess revenue. And one such plan could be to terminate the tax. And that is something that hyperposed. And we could do that, I think, via ordinance that says that after a period of twenty years, when the rebateable portion of the state sales tax, the portion that we are getting in two increments as a result of us adopting this voter-approved sales tax, after that rebate, rebate portion ends, I think that we should terminate the sales tax that the voters approved. And the reason is, is because we pitched this to the voters as funding these three projects. And after we funded those three projects by the Housing Authority and the Family Center, we don't need that money anymore. We could spend it on other things, but we didn't pitch to the voters that we would be collecting this tax forever. So I would propose that we come back with a later ordinance that also sets up a plan for what we would use the remainder of the money on, and then terminates us, terminates that tax after the twenty-year period. At this time, I move that we adopt the ordinance as proposed with deletion of the word trust in three places.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Miller, with accepting the, the agenda bill, excuse me, accepting ordinance thirty seventy-one, the way it's written, without the word trust. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Well, at this time, is there anything else to the good of the order? All right, well, good, great conversation tonight, and at this time, I will adjourn the meeting. See you all soon. Bye-bye.